And welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling. I'm Coach Ashley. Today, we are joined by Julie and Colin from the Get Oiling team. Hey, guys.
Hello.
Hey Colin, you got a helper there?
I do. I have my little Macy here. She's actually the one that answers the emails for you guys. So when you're getting messages back, it's not me, it's her.
She's getting so big. Hi Macy. Hey, so today we have a really exciting training for you. We are going to be talking about what it takes to grow a brand partner business online. If you have found yourself feeling lost, overwhelmed, frustrated, if you have found yourself using language that is not becoming of someone who really desires to grow and build this brand partner business to get oils into every home, we're going to put a stop to that today. We are going to really find peace with learning curves and we are going to really break down just how simple it actually can be for you to grow your young living business online. All right, we're going to get through that here today. I do have slides for you that we're going to get into here in just a moment. But as everyone is coming in, please go ahead and let us know where you're coming in from. And tell us a little bit about where you are in your journey, right? So if you're here today, you are of course interested in taking your Young Living Brand Partner Business to the next level regardless of where you are. Maybe you have a team, maybe you're just getting started, but either way, you've probably realized that it is time to move things out of just the friends and family space and into something bigger. All right, so we've got Hotlanta in the house. What's up? Missouri, Washington, Oklahoma City, Bronx, New York, Missoula, Montana, Phoenix, Arizona, Wisconsin, Ontario, Virginia, Panama, Minnesota. Hello Boulder. Awesome. We are in B C, Canada, New York City, and Florida. We've got Grant Kamen in the house, Arizona, Texas, Philly. Hi. Oh my gosh, guys, we're everywhere. San Francisco. We are so excited to have you here today. So if, for those of you who are brand new, let's go ahead and do a little bit of housekeeping here. We are Get Oiling. This is our weekly call that we offer for free to all Young Living Brand Partners, no matter where you are in the world or whether you are a Get Oiling member. Now, Get Oiling is the premier software platform serving your brand partner business. We have everything that you need to stay in touch, to stay organized, and to scale your business. And of course, we're going to get into a little bit of what that means today. But the main thing that we're really going to be focusing on today is how we can remove overwhelm from the equation. Because I think when a lot of folks get started with us, or even just generally getting started with just the prospect of growing Young Living Online, of you just get overwhelmed at just how many options there really are out there for you to follow. There's all kinds of different voices and people who have had success with A, B, C, D, or thing, you know, all the way to Z. And you don't necessarily know where to start. So we are going to really get clear on exactly what that should look like for you here today, so that you feel confident moving forward and energized as you move forward to grow your business. So what we're going to do right now, and I do have, I saw you, Grant Kamen. We do have a website review today as well, which at the close of our call, we will get into together. So I would say at about a half past or a little past that, depending on how long it takes us to get through this training, which really shouldn't be too terribly long. So what we're going to do is go ahead and turn off our videos to preserve great recording quality for our YouTube channel. By the way, we are youtube.com/getoiling if you want to catch our replays. All right, so as promised, today, we're going to talk about where you even get started. We're going to talk about the basics of what it takes to grow your Young Living Brand Partner Business online, so that we can smash through overwhelm and walk confidently into the future with the business that you want. All right, so what we're going to talk about today are the basics of growing Young Living Online. What you need to know, what you need to do, and when. So what order, all right? Then we're going to talk about the best first steps or next steps for you. This may be stuff that you haven't considered yet, or maybe if you're brand new, you should be so happy to know, you're going to know exactly what you ought to be doing first, okay? And then, of course, we are going to get into life help and Q and A. So if you did come here today looking for help and support, our team is here for you. Head over to the Q and A and ask your questions, all right? And that way, we don't miss it in the comments. Our comments get a little fun, get a little crazy in the chat. So we don't want to miss anything that you want to share with us. So make sure that you add those questions to the Q and A anytime during the call. If you are watching this as a recording in the future, you can join us on a call like this one, live on Zoom, noon, every Thursday, Eastern Time, getoiling.com/weeklyworksession. And if you would like to work together on a live call, as we will be doing today with one of our members, you can go to getoiling.com/websitereview. Although I will note, this isn't just for websites. If you really just feel like you need to talk through some stuff to figure it out, this is an opportunity for you. So I highly encourage you to head over to getoiling.com/websitereview. It's going to ask you some questions and then you can pick a time on a future Thursday to ask questions whether you're going to be with us live or not, or to of course, reserve your time so that we can be together on the call live like we will be today. All right, now you guys, let me know in the chat. Do you guys like analogies? I know I use them a lot. I get comments on them, usually positive ones. You guys fans of analogies? I find these to be extraordinarily effective, where we're trying to relate information that might feel foreign or big or complicated into something that's, I don't know, just a little bit easier for us to understand. I think another really powerful way to use analogies is in taking a topic or a subject, something that is maybe emotionally charged, and maybe reframing it in a new perspective, so that we can look at it from a more balanced point of view. And we're kind of doing both of these things today with the analogy that I want to share with you guys. All right, so if you read the email yesterday, you've read this, but just to preserve this for the future and play along with me here, you guys, let's just say that you're a farmer, okay? And your main crop is tomatoes. Now, maybe you, tomato farmer, started out as a hobby gardener, growing tomatoes in patio containers. How many of you guys have grown tomatoes from seed before? Maybe just show a hand, tell us about it in the chat. Did you, did you grow in containers? Did you grow, you know, a little acre garden, raised beds? What'd you do? So maybe you, tomato farmer, started off, you know, just thinking, you know what? I just, I kind of like to try that. I like tomatoes. I think it's a cool idea. Maybe I can make a jar of sauce, right? So let's just say you grew some. Your friends and family loved those tomatoes so much that they told you, you ought to start selling these, right? Maybe the restaurants in town will buy these. People need to eat these. These are the best tomatoes I've ever had. So you're inspired by their confidence and you agree. So we want to get these tomatoes into every home in our community. So to get this done, you hobby gardener, turning into tomato farmer, you're going to need to graduate from growing in containers to planting in the ground. So you can grow enough tomatoes for a season and to feed that whole community, right? So this means you've actually got a lot of knowledge to gain, right? So you've grown some tomatoes before. Maybe you've grown a few. Obviously, you've grown a few successfully enough that the people who had them said, oh my gosh, I wish I could get these every season. And a lot of them, do you have more, right? So you've had some success, but in order for us to move from our patio in safe, small containers that we know how to grow in, into the field where we can grow at scale, we've got a lot of knowledge to gain and a lot of equipment to purchase, right? To graduate from our grow operation from patio to field. So to get this done, tomato farmer, you're going to need to understand the soil that you're going to be planting in. This is not the soil you're buying from the store. You're dealing with earth now. What are you going to do with it? How do you know that you're going to make it right? What does the soil need to grow great tomatoes? And what do you need to do to amend that soil and when? When and how much do you need to water your plants once they've grown? And when do you put them into the ground after you have, you've sprouted them from seed? You're obviously going to need a greenhouse to start your seeds in bulk, so you've got plants to put into the ground. Depending on where you live, you're going to need equipment for watering, for harvesting, for weighing them, storing them, and then of course, the mechanisms that you need to get these guys sold, right? And surely, more than this, if any of you guys have, you know, had a small farm operation, you sell the farmer's market or something like that, I've probably missed a lot, right? But hey, you know what? You love these tomatoes and the look of joy they bring to the faces of those you share them with. And you've got big plans to get them into every home in your community, right? So all of this, it's obviously worth it, right? So, all right, so we still have our farmer hat on, right? We're wearing our farmer hat. All of this seems pretty straightforward, right? Can I get a yes, right? If we're moving from our patio to the field, we got stuff we got to learn and we got to, we got to know that by next growing season, right? And there's stuff we've got to purchase, but what we're preparing for is a harvest, is an outcome, right? What we're working toward is getting those tomatoes into the homes in our community, right? Is you reaping a profitable harvest. It's all pretty straightforward, nothing to freak out about. It's growing tomatoes, right? Farmer's not freaking out about growing tomatoes, right? So there's nothing too crazy to figure out, right? All right, so now, let's stand in the same place, but let's just, let's just shift 45 degrees, all right? And put our brand partner britches on, okay? You've discovered, you, brand partner here today, you have discovered products that have changed your life. Maybe you've witnessed these products change the life of people you know. And you discovered that there's an opportunity to share those life-changing products and change the world for the better while creating life-changing income for you and your family. And you said yes to this, right? Did you say yes? Give me a yes in the chat. Did you say yes? You are here today because you saw this vision, right? So you started out, when you saw this vision, you started out close to home and shared your products with friends and family, just like our tomato farmer, right? Some loved them, some didn't, some weren't ready, right? And I know we're kind of conflating analogies at this point, but not everybody loves tomatoes. It's not everybody's thing, but you know, it's a lot of people's thing. Maybe they don't want them right now, but maybe they will in the future, same with your oils. But here's the thing, you've joined a mission to get these products into every home on the planet, right? Which means you've got to graduate from your living room to reach the people you need to reach, to hit your rank-up goals, and to achieve that goal of getting oils into every home, right? Now, what do you need to do to get that done? See, the thing is, this is no more complicated than a hobby gardener graduating up to tomato farmer. It's still tomatoes, right? They didn't change, you know, their anything other than understanding what's needed to move from this way of doing things to the next level, right? So let's talk about what that'll take for you as a brand partner to shift online. Because we've got to know and communicate with and share with infinitely more people than we have access to in our physical range, right? In order to achieve that goal of getting oils into every home and for you to create the business that you came here to create, all right? So there's a few things, really simple. The first thing you need is to be present, right? You need a way to be found and to find people that you can share with right now and eventually, right? Simple enough. This may be the first logical step that you took, right? I'm going to go on social and I'm going to make some new friends. And when you took that step, you were correct. This is a thing that we've got to do. We have to increase our presence. We can't just be at home in our community, not seen by anybody except the same 30 to 40 people that we may run into, depending on how big your town is and how often you go out, right? The next thing that we need is organization. We need a way to keep track of and manage our relationships, so we're always on top of what's next. You know who you want to share with, whether you've shared with them, when you're going to follow up with them, who their referrals are for you, and so on, right? We need to have organizational structure so that we can communicate with our network that is growing with our presence. Simple enough, right? We need sharing tools, which is really just a way for you to introduce your products to interested people, no matter where you or they are in the world. And there are so many different correct ways this can be done. Matter of fact, I would, I would actually go so far as to say there are very few incorrect ways you can share and use sharing tools. And then there's simple systems, because basically, you're going to need at some point a streamlined way to get your new people started and to empower others to do the same. Sooner rather than later is most ideal, okay? That's literally it. That is literally it. You need to be somewhere where you can be seen and see people. You need to have some kind of organizational structure, so that you aren't just spinning in circles, chasing people, driving yourself crazy, hoping that somebody today will say yes, right? We need ways to share and we need a simple way to say, here's how you can get the benefit that I did. Right? That's it. Literally, that's it. So let's break these down just a little bit, so I want you to really understand how most of us already have a lot of what we need already figured out. And we're just kind of beating ourselves up, creating a lot more stress and struggle for ourselves than is even remotely necessary, okay? So presence, social media. And this is the kind of social media that you post on, where you share your personality, your likes and interests, and you can engage with the same of others. So this is going to be stuff like Facebook, Instagram, Twitter, LinkedIn, Snapchat, the chatty kinds, short-form content, social media, okay? This can also extend itself, if you choose, to platforms like TikTok, YouTube, Pinterest. There's DMs on literally all of these platforms. DMs meaning direct messages, meaning you can move somebody from a public conversation to a private one, literally anywhere, right? And there's more than just these, right? There's been tons in the last few years of new niche social networks that have popped up as well. By all means, use them. There's no, there's no wrong way to meet new people, right? So long as you're being authentic, being a good person, being a good steward of this company that you want to help reach every home, right? So literally anywhere that you can show up as yourself, meet new people, and move those new friends to the DMs or off-platform with relationships and conversations is a correct move, okay? Now, real quick, because I know you guys want to know this, some of you. If you were easily overwhelmed, just close your eyes and close your ears for just a couple of seconds. The advanced presence pieces, which are not necessary right away, but can support you long-term, are things like a personal website, right? And that's, you know, yourname.com with a totally customized whatever your homepage is. This is advanced, it is not necessary. Personal website, blog, so that, you know, you could be published and taken more seriously as an authoritative expert on whatever it is you want to talk about. And, you know, more long-form, you know, expert content like podcasts. These are advanced. If you are not advanced in your business, then you don't even need to worry about these things yet, okay? All right, now let's get into organization. The most optimal thing, and most of us here on the call have this, is a contact manager. This is available at all plan levels with Get Oiling. Dollar for your first month, if you're on our most popular plan levels, but literally starting with our $7 a month plan, you have this. If you have a social media account and our $7 a month plan, you have what you need. Okay, contact manager. Another far less optimal alternative to using a contact manager would be a spreadsheet or a worksheet, worksheet-style tracker. If you are just shoestringing, cannot, you know, manage the seven bucks a month, then by all means, use these. Actually, if you go to getoiling.com/accelerator, I have a worksheet-style tracker that I used to use with my teams that you are more than welcome to use and to share with your team if that's where you're at. And it's also just generally a really good training for duplication. That's getoiling.com/accelerator. All right, and then, of course, there is what so many of us do and drive ourselves nuts with this, is to just keep it in your head or react to the newsfeed or the DMs when you see somebody and you're like, oh, oh, I haven't shared with that person. And then you act on it in that moment, right? Which is not optimal, but this is our keep it in our head strategies or, you know, scroll through my DMs and see whether or not I've actually communicated with someone recently, which is not really, not really organization, is it? All right, so I've just gone through those first two things. It's your presence in your organization of how you keep in contact with your people. You guys want to know a secret? You want to know something that might blow your mind? You can get to diamond by barely figuring out these first two things. Literally, you can get to, I know multiple people who've gotten to diamond by barely figuring out social media plus keeping, keeping track of conversations. Right? You can be just passion and ignorance on fire, just trying. You can try your way to diamond, right? All right, now, full disclosure, if you don't have the organizational piece figured out, that method does take a lot of hustle and can lead to burnout. You should know that. That's why we're here today, sharing with you the things that can help you to actually grow in a way that's sustainable, that'll get you the business that you want without sacrificing your peace of mind and free time. All right, so sharing tools. Young Living's own website is a phenomenal place to send people or to be with people and guide them toward information. Young Living has loads of information where they teach about their products and, and the reasons why Young Living is different. You can use Young Living's own website as a sharing tool. Get Oiling has built-in themes. If you'd like to preserve curiosity on your site, these are great things to use. We have several videos where we actually teach ways that you can use them to share live calls with or without third-party validation. So your Zoom that's included with Get Oiling, your own demo posts, videos, reels of you using product and talking about what it's done for you, pre-recorded video presentations, which you can find literally all over YouTube of people who are good at presenting, basically pitching the kit. Those are things you can share with interested people, anywhere, anytime, as a way to share Young Living with someone and to collect a decision. You of course, have the opportunity as well for in-person appointments or if you do vendor events and things like that at live events, all right? Now finally, simple systems. Now, the drip campaign to welcome and onboard new customers, this simple system one is already done for you in Get Oiling. Already done. A drip campaign to warm up leads and encourage them to engage with you. Also, already done for you inside of Get Oiling. Both of these things are compliant to your market and are already done for you. You don't have to think about it. Now, I should also mention here, where we're talking about simple systems, all a system is, is the same set of steps followed each time. And there's a couple of mindset pieces that we're going to touch on here in just a couple of minutes that I think will help to free you up a bit, so that you can establish systems more readily. I think that the reason why most of us don't have systems is because we change things so frequently, right? Because we're looking at what other people are doing and thinking maybe we need to change. All right, your systems don't have to be high-tech or complicated. They can be incredibly, incredibly simple, okay? So most of this stuff, you guys, of all of these four things, most of this is already figured out and done for you. But what's critical is that you don't lose sight of your vision. You don't lose sight of the reason why you said yes to being a part of this mission to getting oils into every home. That's where your strength comes from. It's the reason you said yes. So let me ask you guys real quick. Let me know in the chat. The first time you ever shared Young Living with someone else, was that a yes? I'm curious. Got a lot of no's, but definitely a few yeses here. So, did you give up on your first no? Absolutely not, right? Of course not. So it's time for us to grow into the shoes that'll take us across the stage, all right? We have to become a greater version of who we are today to be able to achieve the things that we have only dreamed of. And that's going to take learning new things, right? It's gonna take learning new stuff. It's gonna take growth, right? It's gonna take learning things that are outside of your comfort zone, but that's okay, isn't it? Nothing extraordinary in life ever happens inside of a comfort zone. You, here today, you were blessed with a vision for a better future, for yourself, for your family, for your community, for the world. And you found a way to see it through. So why let something as small as learning something new stand in your way? Everything worth getting good at takes time to learn, everything, right? So here's what we need to learn. And obviously, there are many, many, many things that we can learn that can serve us, but I want to make sure we are abundantly clear here today on exactly the most important fundamental basics that we need to know to get really good at, so that we can serve our mission and effectively duplicate in leadership, because we've mastered these simple, important things, okay? Three truths. Number one, blinders on in your own lane. We have got to stop worrying about what other people are doing or comparing what's going on with us and our business to what we think we see happening in someone else's. Because typically, when we're seeing it happening in someone else's, we are looking from the outside. We're looking at the highlight reel. We have no idea what's on the other side of what we're seeing. We have to stand tall in our vision and our purpose and do the things that we know to be effective and get good at those things before we start trying to play in somebody else's sandbox, which is just generally never that great of an idea, right? Learning, and this is so important, so, so very important, you guys. Learning isn't consuming information. It's acting on the information you consume and learning from the result. So I want to encourage you, because there will be many things that you need to learn on your journey, pick one thing to learn at a time and master it before you start something else. And I promise you, with your Get Oiling system, when you pick one thing and you master it, you have already gotten your money's worth. And I think that anybody who knows this to be true can echo this here in the chat here today. Learning how to do one thing in our system can save you time and money and help to make you more effective in so many immeasurable ways that this approach, like stop thinking about like, oh, well, if I'm not doing all of the 37 million things I can do with Get Oiling, I'm not getting my money's worth. That's not true. Pick one thing and master it before you move on to the next. You will be carrying that confidence with you and you will create positive momentum and belief that will fuel your ability to do the next thing. That maybe might be a little bit more ninja, a little bit more, a little bit more complicated, a little bit more advanced, right? But please don't try to dive into the deep end if you don't know how to tread water yet, right? Just start with some doggy paddles, guys, just one thing at a time. And then never forget, never, ever, ever forget, that at the end of the day, this is a relationship business. This is still, for the farmer, this is still, it's just tomatoes. It's just tomatoes, you guys. And in your case, it's just people. It's just people. So focus on learning skills and tool proficiency that helps you to grow your relationships in quality and in quantity. Right? Focus on the things that serve relationships. And I'm going to give you a definitive short list here in just a second, okay? But please remember these things. You'll see, and if you're tuning into our weekly calls here, you'll see people doing inspiring, amazing things. But that doesn't necessarily mean that that's what your business needs right now. You'll sometimes see people who have done inspiring, amazing things, and now they're selling their knowledge. That may be something you can use. That may be something you can use in the future, but you need to become the best steward of your plot so that you know what your soil needs to grow your tomatoes, right? You don't need to buy the fertilizer that the person in Wisconsin uses. If you're in California, the dirt's not the same. So don't think that you need to change what you do all the time just because you see another brand partner somewhere doing something different from you. Okay? And if you're going to learn something new, master it, right? You have not learned until you have acted on the learning you have consumed. And it's what you take away from that experience that teaches you. Okay? All right. So let's talk about what we can master and get oiling, the most important things in what order? So that we can equip ourselves to be relationship focused because just like to the farmer, it's just tomatoes. In this business, it's relationships. Okay? So in Get Oiling, the first and most important thing, sunrise, sunset period, it, contact manager. Okay? This is a CRM, a customer relationship manager, your contact manager in a people-based business is your most important tool. Period. So what I want to encourage you to do, and if you go to our YouTube channel and you search, you know, you can search YouTube channels, search VO, VO, okay? I want you to learn how to upload your VO file because I teach that to you there. And we have a full walkthrough with, you know, you can print out or download or whatever, the full step-by-step with screenshots and everything. Learn how to upload and communicate with your existing customers via email and/or text. Okay? You're going to communicate with them anyway. Learn how to do them with this, right? Make that the first thing and master this. In the contact manager, you're going to learn about tags, which is basically what you're able to do to categorize the people who are in your contact manager. So if you wanted, for instance, to focus on the moms in your team, you can do that and send them a special, special message when you learn about something about seedlings and you'd like to share that with them, right? So you'll learn about tags and you can filter for those tags on your contacts. And you can start to strategically communicate with your people in a way that serves your relationships most effectively. Okay? Because if somebody doesn't have kids and maybe they don't really have people with kids in their lives, they're going to maybe feel a little frustrated and unheard if we just bombard them with a bunch of information about seedlings because you just got it because you paid for it or because you think it's interesting, right? That's not serving your relationship. That's serving what you think is serving your business, right? So we want to master the things that make our relationships more effective and that grow more of those relationships. All right. So let's start with our contact manager, communicating with our VO file. Okay? We will also want to learn how to apply campaigns, maybe remove a campaign, resend a message in a campaign, that kind of thing. A campaign, you guys, just real quick, is a series of messages that are sent out at intervals. You can see some of them are pre-made for you inside of Get Oiling at all plan levels, including the ones that you can send to your brand new customers and even to your new prospects. Okay? Now the next thing, and these are just two main things, right? First is contact manager. And here are the things inside the contact manager that you really want to focus on learning first. The second thing I want you to learn how to use is how to capture leads from live events and online. So if you do trade shows, vendor events, in-person classes, online classes, I want you to be able to capture that contact information of prospective future customers using your Good Oiling system and then use your contact manager to follow up with them. Okay? So you can do this with landing pages or on custom pages with lead forms. And we have trainings on both of these. If you have not mastered the contact manager piece, don't even look at this yet. Okay? This is the next step. And then of course, you want to make sure that you're following up with the leads from these events same way that you would with your contact manager, you're filtering for the people from that event because they've got a tag on them. You're sending them an email. Maybe it's a saved reply. Maybe it's a drip campaign, whatever that might be. Okay? These are the most important things, you guys. And then finally, and this is one of the easier things that you can do, you could get this out of the way pretty quickly, meeting via Zoom inside Get Oiling. So creating a Zoom meeting, sending a, a meeting link out, starting the meeting from inside Get Oiling because your Get Oiling does include Zoom. That is a huge time and money saver. You've got everything inside of one space. Again, at all plan levels. So this, finally, this is it. Three things. Learn your contact manager, learn how to capture leads and follow up with them, and then learn how to meet via Zoom. And hey, yeah, yeah. If you start with number three, great. Go with what your business needs right now, but make sure that these are the things that you know how to do first. Because once you know how to do these things and you feel confident in doing these things, everything else in our system starts to feel like a cakewalk because you're running your business using Get Oiling. And, and all you need to run your business is to manage how you communicate with people who are in your business or who could be, right? And that's what we're doing right here. Okay? So let's get into some life help and Q and A. As promised, I do have a, we do have a website review that we're going to do, but I want to get to the, the Q and A here real quick. Um. Okay. Um, this is an interesting question, Maria. Can you please tell us how people are enrolling 30 people a month on Instagram? So we actually did have a brand partner who joined us for a training a while back. And, and she had enrolled easily that many, uh, over several months period of time. She enrolled in like a hundred people or near, near a hundred people inside of a few months. There's a little bit of a catch there, right? So A, she's in the US market. Um, and in the US market right now, and, and this is the case then as well, you could sign someone up as a customer without them paying for anything or buying anything. So that's a very simple, like answer to that question. You can get customers now, like people can sign up as your customer for free. And, and they, and they don't have to pay anything. Okay? Now, um, the other way that, that this would be happening, provided people are actually going and shopping right away, is that typically you're going to see a link in bio. Um, and that's going to be, uh, some people use Linktree. If you have Get Oiling, you don't need Linktree. You should look up our link in bio training on our YouTube channel. That will actually teach you and it gives, we have a template and everything that's pre-made for you with Canva, and we have a link page template that's built into our system. Um, and so on that page, you could have links to bundles from MYYL, right? So you know, hey, if you're ready to get started shopping, click the link in bio and see the different bundle options. And so maybe you've got a baby bundle, a respiratory bundle of this or that, whatever, right? Um, and then of course, you know, those people are out there making content and saying, link in bio, link in bio, link in bio. Now granted, a person like that does need to have a large following. And in the case of the person who we interviewed, who had enrolled that many people in that short period of time, um, she had had a reel on Instagram go viral. And so there were loads of people, way more people than had ever really seen her stuff before, who were suddenly very curious about what she had done and, or what she had, and she was just sending them to the link in bio. And that's how that worked. So if you have a very large following on Instagram, that is something that, that, you know, is feasible. It's not relationship building. It's, 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 um, it's social selling, which I mean, that's fine. You can do that. Um, we are, we're here for the relationship part. Um. Let me see. And Maria, I can't really speak to how someone like that is enrolling because literally what I'm telling you that they're doing is they're, they're not even getting in the DMs in a lot of cases. They're just telling people who ask questions, link in bio, purchase in the link in bio, and they do or they don't. It's not a great lead generation strategy. These can be, you can have a hundred thousand people see a post that you make on social media and you'll never have a chance to communicate with those people again because you didn't capture the interested people's information. You're really just going off of whether or not somebody's actually going to say yes today. Which again is fine if that's like your model, but that's not something that I teach and it's not something that really bodes well for long-term relationship development. It's great for short-term shit sales. If that's your skill set and that's how you want to promote yourself, and by all means, if you're good at that, do it. But, but don't be surprised if you have enormous attrition. Okay. Uh, okay. So I, I don't want, I'm not, I don't want to dismiss anything that you've got here, but we do have, we do have someone who has reserved today, so I want to make sure that I can bring you out and we can chat a little bit. Adonza, are you here? Could you raise your hand for me, please? Here we go. Hi, how are you?
Oh, I am very thankful.
Well, we're thankful to have you here today. So, um, so yeah, tell me a little bit about what kind of help you're looking for today. Are you there?
Hold on.
Sure.
I have to turn off the audio. Okay. Cause um, I had two devices open because I, I might've needed to leave, but I pulled, rearranged because you were going over a little bit so that I could, um, I could spend time with you. So I'm on my laptop.
Okay, perfect. All right. So I'm excited to, yeah, hear from you. What, what, what kind of help are you looking for?
Oh, sorry. Go ahead. Repeat that.
Oh, no. What, what kind of help are you looking for?
Okay. Um, yes, I wanted to find out about the con, with the classes. I have gotten some help from Colin and stuff, but when you go over to the get, the, the grow workspace and you pull them over into your, you know, you clean the bundle and you pull them over, I would like to know the, the best way to do it because like you end up having like all sorts of tabs open and it can get confusing like, okay, which one is related to this one? Because if you are trying to streamline and get it in properly, you could miss something on one of the tabs or something. So can you go over the proper procedure for pulling those classes over and like repurposing your content and stuff? So that you can use them like in the classes section in the grow and the Get Oiling site? And also on social media, I understand about copying the, the link and stuff, but I want to make sure that when the links go out, um, that I have the proper settings and stuff so that it's not, it's not sending the irrelevant campaigns and stuff. So let, can we start with that? Cause I'm, I'm trying to get people into classes and that is producing a lot of, a lot of interest. So right now I want to focus on there.
Okay. So our first question, do you have a member area for your customers where, where you are, you know, sort of sharing and posting information currently?
Um, I have a member area and I have vault set up with two, two vaults, but I was just doing campaigns. Um, I have two campaigns going. Um, well, one just finished. Most people were on that one and then they transitioned over into the next one. So I was doing campaigns.
Okay, okay. And so are you, um, are, how are you choosing who you're sending those campaigns to?
Um, it was sent to everybody because I, I'm trying to figure out like who is showing interest. And so far, um, if I'm understanding correctly, it looks like 157 people opened the emails and I think are reading it like almost every day. Most of them are almost reading it every day.
Okay, that's excellent. So, um, so what I would, what I would recommend is this, um, if these are your personals, uh, you're personally enrolled, uh, or these are people who have had an expectation set for them that you will be sending educational information to them, then, then you could certainly continue doing what you're doing. Um, I, I would caution, um, you know, kind of going back to the relationship piece we were talking about earlier. Not everyone is necessarily going to be interested in everything. And if we are sending people things that they maybe don't want or didn't ask for, the likelihood that they can tune us out entirely, unsubscribe from us, or even Marcus' spam goes up. And we don't want any of those things to happen. So Grow Workspace actually has several of their newer bundles where they have permission marketing enabled where you can send, like they have one campaign that you can send out and then if someone clicks a button inside of that campaign, then they get the rest of the message series. So I would definitely take a look at the Grow Workspace bundles in terms of what's included in them, and they always spell that stuff out. You know, this, you know, this, uh, bundle has this campaign, it does this, it has this page, it does that, it has this automation and so on. So I would definitely look at that moving forward. That way at least you're giving people the opportunity to say yes to getting more emails. But in terms of the content repurposing and where we're talking about Grow Workspace, we do have several and you should def, I recommend you check this out. I think it's the second Tuesday of the month, Greg and I both go on to Grow Workspace's office hours call, and we do specialized training for Grow Workspace members. And since this is a Get Oiling call as opposed to a Grow Workspace one, I do recommend that you check that one out because it is specific to them. Um, and I, but I do have several trainings that I did for them where I talked about that, that very specific topic of repurposing content. So turning Grow Workspace content into other things like blog posts or embedding your Sway files into lessons inside of your, your member area and things like that. To keep things from getting too overwhelming where, where you've got multiple tabs and things like that, that you're trying to manage. What I would encourage you to do is, is to have a single project that you're working on at a time. So let's just say, for instance, you want to, um, you want to create five blog posts to publish in the next five weeks. And so you're going to sit down and say, okay, I'm going to go and I'm going to pick these five bundles from Grow Workspace. And, um, and I'm, I'm just going to open one at a time. And so the first one I'm going to open, I'm going to copy this information. I'm going to save these images and I'm going to put it into a Word document or something like that. And then I'm going to repeat that for the next one, the next one, the next one, the next one. And so now I have all of these image files and I have all of this copy. And I can now go to Get Oiling with this one document that's got all of this copied and pasted information and go blog post, blog post, blog post, blog, blog, right? So, um, so I would encourage you to do that. If you are, if you're wanting to populate your member area with Sway files, then you could go and, and I actually, in the how to move your groups course, which is get oiling.com/moveyourgroups, I actually have a spreadsheet that I created for the purpose of, of capturing this kind of information. So you would go and you would grab the Sway link and you would paste it into the spreadsheet. You would, you know, basically gather all of that stuff from grow into one place so that when it's time to go into Get Oiling and do the, the actual work, you've, you don't have a million tabs open. You've got, you know,
Yeah, that sounds, that sounds like a great idea. I like that.
Good, good. So it's totally free and you should absolutely use it for that purpose.
Okay, good. Since, since you made it very clear, um, the differences with the Get Oiling and the Grow. I do have a, a question on my Get Oiling then that would be, um, thing. All right. So in my Get Oiling, um, some of my customers, they are not getting information and stuff, and I understand about the tabs and stuff now. I'm going to go through, spend some time and tag my, because I have tagged some of them already and I have set like what type of customer they are for a lot of them. And I want to start bringing in like, um, the ones And I want to start bringing in like the ones from my tools. That, cuz, cuz I have cut contacts in my scanning stuff. I have contacts in some of my, like my Google and stuff that I want to move over to get oiling. So I understand about tagging and, and making sure that people get information that's relevant to them so that I, I took that. And I am doing classes that are about personal development. So I think like the people who are staying involved in it, it's, it's helping them personally develop. And it's not, it's not about kids stuff or athlete stuff or like that. So I'm safe there. Thank God I chose those ones first. But on my contacts, some of them are set up and they're not getting the, the emails. And they haven't opted out or they're not. So how can I filter to find out the ones who are? They're, they're getting the campaigns, but the emails are not going.
Also, the campaigns, the, the campaigns have been applied to those people.
Yes.
But they're not receiving the messages.
Right.
Okay.
I've seen some of them like that.
Have, have you gone in and confirmed on their, their individual contact card? That they haven't opted out of, of anything?
Well, the ones that I saw, they weren't opted out. And of course I didn't, I didn't remember to, to take a screenshot. But I, I just wondered if there was a way, cuz I, I didn't want to go through all of my contacts and go, oh, oh, yeah, this one is it. I wanted to find out if there's a way that you can filter out those who are actually getting the emails and those who are opening the emails.
Got you. So.
I'm getting the daily activity on my, on my, what's it called? The get oiling, like get oiling email. And I'm seeing that there are a few, but then when I go over, I'm seeing that's like a hundred and fifty-seven. When I go over in my dashboard. I'm, I'm seeing where it's saying a hundred and fifty-seven opened up emails or something like that. But I don't see a hundred and fifty-seven.
Okay, so what you'll wanna do, a couple of different ways that you could do this. You can filter your contacts to see who was active or inactive and, and this is going to be people who have opened emails, clicked links in emails or texts. Or logged into your member area, that kind of thing. So, you know, depending on how frequently or when the last time was you sent something out. You can look for people who, let's just say if they're inactive, that means that they haven't opened any emails at all from you. For instance, you can say maybe these are people who are yes opted into mail, but they've been inactive for the last ten days or thirty days or something to that effect. You could filter it this way. The other way that you could go about doing this is actually going over to your messages. Which in this case, you can look and see if you. Let me see if we have anything that's sent out to a lot of people. Do we have anything that's maybe scheduled?
Oh, I can't see. Hold on one second.
Okay. So it looks like these are all campaign messages. And so here's, you know, here's Colin, you sent this one to Colin. And here's the email that you sent out. In this case, you can see that it was delivered. If you, it depends on how you send something out. So if this was, let's say for instance, you sent out a broadcast message to your contacts and so that's not a campaign. Then you can actually go through and see. The, the details of, of the message itself, but in this case, because these are all campaign messages that were sent out to individuals. You're actually able to, to, to click and see when, when those things went out to those people. But yeah, I, I would probably for you maybe look like sort this out from. Just going, I, I don't wanna like actually just like share your screen with all your contacts information on, except sensitive information. But, but I would maybe filter for the inactive people to try to, to identify that. But then also like, and this is the funny thing about communicating in this way in bulk. It's, it's a great way to introduce leverage into how you operate. But it's never going to be a pure substitute for, for one-on-one outreach. And so what I would really look for is maybe filtering for those inactive people. Every, you know, every two weeks or so, filter for the people who haven't been opening emails. And then make a point to reach out to them on social media, in person, or however you might normally reach out to those folks. So that you are, you know, able to, you know, of course have, have a good relationship, stay in touch. But then you could even say, you know, hey, just wanted to, to double check, you know, I send out educational information, are you getting the emails? And then if they're saying, oh, no, but I'd like them, then you can troubleshoot. Because they could, it, it could be going into their spam, they could be accidentally deleting them. It could be any number of different things that are happening on their end. And typically the best way to find out is to actually be in contact with a person who you're sending stuff to that's not getting the.
That's, I'm starting to do that. Yeah, I'm starting to do that. What I, what I did was let people know that they could unlock extra chances to win in my promo. Because they registered or because they're doing the class. And I, I've been trying to, to get like a soft approach. And then say, hey, you can get even more chances to win if you engage or if you haven't bought your kit yet. For the people who I know were prospects, if you get your kit by this time. Then you could, you could get extra chances to win because we, we want to do the draw. And I'm not including all of this information in, but I want to do the draw so that I'll have time to, to figure out the winner. Do the announcement post, do all of that sort of stuff and, and you know, just. I'm, I'm trying to make sure that this helps me to see who is interested, who's, who's been showing lots of interest and stuff. But I was, I was really interested in finding out exactly, you know. With it saying a hundred and fifty-seven emails were open, I wasn't seeing it. So I, I wanted to make sure that I knew how I could figure out who those hundred and fifty-seven were for that day.
Yeah, Julie, Colin, do you have anything else that you might add here if you were troubleshooting this? To try to, you know, determine where those hundred and fifty-seven are or who the, like who the others that are not the hundred and fifty-seven are? No? Okay. Cool. Alright.
I would have to go through and look at her account is what I would do.
Yeah. Okay, so yeah, if, just so we can make sure, cuz I, obviously again, like I, I wanna make sure that you're getting your help here today. But in the interest of preserving the privacy of, of the contacts in your system, this is kind of more of a thing that we might need to work with off screen.
Okay, okay, good. I, I think you, you gave me some good tips with the filters and stuff, the inactive. Can you just go back over that again and maybe your dashboard or something? To filter it by days. I just wanna see how you did that again. Cuz in my, I didn't realize that my Zoom was minimized.
So sure. So yeah, just go to my contacts and click the filter button and that's, that's what I'm showing here. Now down here, we have more filters. What I would do is I would look for the people who are opted into email. So the people who have said yes to email, but who have been inactive, meaning they have not opened an email in the last two weeks.
Yeah, I did this for something else, but I didn't realize you could do it like this too. So that's awesome. Thank you. That, that works. Yeah.
Perfect. Happy we could.
Alright, I think, I think that will help me because I should be able to figure out who opened, right? And it should produce, cuz if your, if your, if your dashboard is telling me a hundred and fifty-seven, it should produce a hundred and fifty-seven. So I think that, that, that's the answer.
Right, so that's, that's, so this is gonna produce the non-hundred and fifty-seven, right? So the hundred and fifty-seven.
No, but I mean the active, if I switch it to active, I should be able to tell. Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I couldn't see it cuz I didn't realize that my, that my Zoom was minimized. So when you were showing it, you. I didn't realize that I missed what you were showing, but I knew I missed something. So thanks for going back over that again. Thank you for your, for your help. It's really helpful, Chris. Thank you.
Of course, of course. And welcome back anytime. Excited to see more of your work and thank you for being part of our community.
Thank you, thank you. Bye. You all have an awesome platform. I'm enjoying it. We, we're hoping that our shipping things are getting sorted. And we're hoping to have things more streamlined with DHL. Being in Grand Cayman, we are the pioneering team that is, has bought the oils to the island and they're two like main teams. But one has become a little bit less active. So I'm pretty much the only one on the island right now. Doing this sort of stuff, even though there are other people using them and loving them. I don't, I'm the only one that's looking to grow like thirty people a month and stuff. So yeah, people seem to be looking to me for information and stuff about Young Living. So.
Well, you've done an amazing job. I, I've seen your website and all of the stuff that you've put together. You are very clearly creating a hub, a resource for your team there and congratulations for, for being at the start of this.
Yeah, we, I have a wellness community as well. That's the, the other one that I want to bring that information. So I'm, I'm targeting all the different platforms and I'm, and I'm sending out, that's why I wanted to learn how to do it on social media. To repurpose the information and Colin went over some things with me. So I'm, I'm gonna go and send to all of those people personal messages and say, hey, would you be interested in this? Are you, you know, so just, just see if I can get them over to my site from off of social media. So I've got a few hundred, like almost a thousand on my wellness. My in-person wellness thing where, and, and people all over the world are tuning in because of their, their friends who live in Grand Cayman. And they're supporting them cuz I like to promote people and I like to help them grow in their wellness. So when they see me post stuff about their friends and stuff, they're like all over it and stuff. And when I post the highlight reel from our annual event, thousands of people view it. So I'm trying and like the page and stuff. So not thousands, but like people out of those thousands will, will like the page. So I'm growing that. And then I wanna move them over now to my get oiling and I want to use get oiling more to talk with them. So I'm gonna be doing my tags, doing my tags and stuff. Thank you for your kind support.
Absolutely, absolutely. We're here for you and so, so happy for you. Hope you'll come back soon.
Thank you.
Alright, so you guys, thank you for all of your great questions today. There's two more here that I haven't had a chance to get to. Last call, if you really, really just wanna make sure you get your questions in. Gonna answer a couple more. We're gonna get going cuz we are over time. You guys are amazing and yeah, like congratulations, Adanza and your team in the Cayman, in Grand Cayman. That is an enviable spot to be, is it not? You guys, ground floor in a new place. Pretty awesome. Great opportunity there. Alright, so Maria says lots of members in Young Living that are high in ranks are often on video calls around an hour. But in the end, we still have no idea how they're able to enroll a huge number of new members. Lots of meetings, but in the end, there's no clear information on how this is done. So there's actually a lot of great information out there on, on how this is done and, and some of the best places to look. Might surprise you. It's not necessarily stuff that is being talked about, you know, out in the open. Because you know, I mean, if it's out in the open, then the people like who could be prospects are gonna kind of get the gist of what people are doing. And you know, it's kind of trade secret in that way, but I'll, I'll, I'll break the, the glass here for you. It's relationships, it's follow-up, it's conversations. The, the way that you enroll lots of people. Is by communicating with lots of people and then nurturing those relationships over time. That's literally it. To the farmer, it's tomatoes. It takes time for that seed to sprout. And for it to get enough of the nourishment it needs from the sun and the soil and water for it to sprout. And then even more time still for it to become a plant and even more time still for it to fruit, right? So this is the same. You dig your well before you're thirsty, right? You, you, you plant your crop before you're starving, right? So, so that's, that's really, there's, there's no magic to it. Aside from, you know, these are relationships that have been in the pipeline for a while. Another analogy I love to use for this is, is like the whirly pop, the popcorn popper, the stove top kind, right? Where you've got popcorn kernels in there. And, and, and in order for those popcorn kernels to actually pop and become edible popcorn, unless you know those weird people like my kid that likes actually like eat the ones that aren't popped. I don't understand the teeth of these people, but anyway. You stir this, you have to keep the heat on and you gotta keep stirring it. It's an active thing. And some pop quick, some pop all at once, some never pop, right? This is true in the microwave too, but I think the manual is a better analogy, right? What you're seeing, when you see people enroll a bunch of people at once, is an exercise of influence and the fruits of their labor over time. And the way that they get people to yes is to follow up and say, are you ready to get started, right? And in order for you to be at that point where you say, are you ready to get started? You do have to have a conversation wherein that person has revealed to you a problem that they want solved. A pain that they have not resolved for themselves. And of course, that person with influence, being the person of authority who can say, I have a way. Would you be interested if I could help you get that thing figured out? Would you wanna try something that you maybe haven't tried before? And they say yes or they don't. And you do that with enough people, you enroll a lot of people. It's really it. It's just tomatoes. Alright, Joni, how do you feel about my landing page being a link page with one of those links being my lead magnet? In some ways, it feels like a brilliant idea, not mine. I heard it on a training here. Yeah, I did that. So yeah, no, I, I think that that's, that's a perfectly fine thing for you to use if your primary means of connecting with people is social. If social media is your main way you connect with people, then having a link page, that link in bio. Perfect. Start with that and you'll, you'll do perfectly well with that to capture leads. Make sure that you're telling them because you know, the only problem with the link page as a landing page is that it's not one option, right? Landing pages are really best made with a single option. Put your name and email in here and you can get this thing that you want, right? With a link page, that's a bunch of options, right? So you just wanna make sure that in your utilization of your link page as a landing page. That you are promoting the landing page function of it. So saying link in bio, look for button this, right? Link in bio, look for this freebie. And that way you're encouraging people to actually take a specific action on that page. You are kind of, you're taking a little bit of, of, of an extra step there to make up for the fact that we're giving them more options than they would have had on a landing page otherwise. But it's perfectly fine for you to do that, especially as you're just getting started. One hundred percent. Most of us are mobile these days anyway. Alright, thank you guys again for all of the great questions. We will be live at two o'clock on our Attract Well channel today, talking about whether or not you actually need a homepage. Or a traditional website for your business and what that means for you at different stages of your business and some of the things that you can use, including a link page. To, to actually concentrate your efforts in the right direction. If you would like to go and check that out or join us if you're a coach practitioner. This is a lot of content that might serve you. That's gonna be at attractwell.com forward slash office hours. And we look forward to seeing you there. We'll be back here next week, same time. If there's something you would like to learn more about, let us know. And we'll be back here next week with help to grow your young living business. Let's go get some things done this week. See you next time. Bye, guys.
Bye, guys.